Noah, Noah T. Stidham, Lord, Heavenly Father. Thank you for this day and for these people. Help us to work with good in our hearts and with wisdom to make decisions for our Pawnee people, to do those good things and help us to have our minds aim for our future, for now, but also for years to come. And Lord, forgive us when we fall short and help us to always be learning and always do that little bit better. Please bless the food here, the nourishment of our bodies. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you for that, Dr. Evans. At this time, we'll go to item number two, roll call.
Misty Nuttall?
Here.
Jordan Canuho?
Excused.
George Gardapi here. Carol Chapman?
Here.
Cynthia Butler?
Here.
Donna Hare?
She will be about 15 minutes late, so she's excused right now.
Jean Evans?
Here.
Sammy Kimble?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. Item number three, approval of agenda. Are there any additions, deletions?
We do have one change under new business, eight new business, number four, or sorry, number three. It'll be approval of resolution 2468, Articles of Operation for the Pawnee Nation Steel Company, LLC. We're going to take out the Articles of Organization at this time.
And just also to note that these will be separate and they'll be coming back to council. They've been assigned resolution 2473. Hearing none, the discussion on entertaining a motion to approve the agenda with changes?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Secretary Gardapi, second by Councilwoman Butler. Let's call for the vote.
George Gardapi, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimble?
Yes.
Item number four, Pawnee Business Council travel report and request. Are there any requests? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number five, Pawnee Business Council Committee reports. Are there any committee reports needing to be made or any announcements? Treasurer Chapman, did you get confirmation on the Budget Committee meeting to be held next Tuesday?
George, Councilwoman Gardapi was going to pick a time. Did you do that, George?
Not yet, Treasurer Chapman.
Okay, but that's where we're at with it. We're planning on, the budget is in the morning, but he was, Councilman Gardapi was going to pick a time later after that. He just hasn't picked.
Okay, we'll hold off on that and wait for the announcement.
Okay.
Okay, item number six, ARPA expenditure report.
Yes, I will go ahead and present on that. This was prepared, it's the final figures prepared by the Finance Department, and it's a really good summary with the graph here, color-coded graph, and then at the bottom, it's broken down by years, and we have expended to date 20 million, $25,760. And in 2021 was when we expended the majority of our funds with $14,372,901. And as we're going along, knowing that we're not going to have this money anymore, we have cut our spending back. And then 2022, $3,947,794. And in 2023, $1,448,235. And through 11/15 of '24, $256,830. And at the bottom are the totals, at the bottom of our total ARPA expenditures, again, our 20 million, $25,000, and $750. And the total ARPA allocation was originally $23,483,580. And our estimated ARPA balance currently is $3,457,820. And the color codes coordinate with the graphs there, so. And the portion, we don't know yet till next week when we meet again, but a portion of that balance will go for the balanced budget. It'll go in revenue replacement to have a balanced budget. We'll know next week, next Tuesday.
Are there any questions for Treasurer Chapman in the expenditure report? Councilwoman Kimble? Councilwoman Kimball?
Thank you. Thank you, Treasurer Chapman, for your report. And I just wanted to reiterate that for our community, that we have to have this funding allocated, I believe, by December 31st with the spend to be completed by the end of next year. So we are in the midst of getting the planning done between council and staff and such. I felt it's important to say that today, Carol. Thank you.
Yes, it was. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Councilwoman Kimball. If no further questions, we'll go on to item number seven, under Old Business, Approval of 2024 Pawnee Nation Third Quarterly Report Financials.
President Nuttall, I have our new Finance Director, and welcome, Mr. Frederick Raybine, and James are on the call. And Mr. Raybine, would you like to report on our quarterly report, the old business?
If I could, if James could help me out on this, please. Sorry, I just not got back, what was, I just walked in. I didn't log off whenever I went to go. I thought I left my phone in the office, dead office, so.
James, this is the old business, the third quarterly program reports that were finished and corrected for 2024, the financial report, and it's quite lengthy, so.
Yeah, are we talking, I think, I remember the questions, one was why zero for the ARPA? And the ARPA was, it had, the full amount has been already allocated, so from what I understand, they want, you wanted the balance of the ARPA rather than what's been allocated. I put zero because there's no money to be reallocated. And the second part was the, why the expenses exceeded the revenue. So it's just the process takes a little longer, and since my focus hadn't been, obviously for the last two years, haven't been for a lot of our, my original, what I was hired for as a staff accountant, and we've added the extra duties of Acting Finance Director, so those have been lagged, but quarter one is included in it. Quarter two has been entered, but hasn't been posted. Quarter three is the, the payroll's been posted, the spreadsheet has been done, and the numbers haven't been put in for the third quarter. So that's why we show the negative. And always report what we get out of mint. I mean, I can, you know, make up the numbers to show you what's coming to us, but that's why it shows negative. If I'm not mistaken, those are two questions. There may be one more, but I, for some reason, I don't remember a third one.
James, I think you kind of answered the questions that we had on the financials. I know that they're in our packet, and just like she had mentioned, it is a very long packet. Those were the quarterly financials. Another, just throwing this in there too, another reason the expenditures exceed the revenue is also we have programs that are reimbursement programs. So we incur the expenses, and then we have to do drawdowns to basically repay the nation back for the tribal funds that were used. So that can be another component of why the expenditures exceed the revenue. But I think the reporting needs to be made just how it is, because it shows our true financial position, and just as long as, you know, we have those revenues that cover those deficit areas, I mean, obviously they do, or else, you know, we would be hearing from vendors and such, or whatever, but, you know, those are just some of the circumstances that when we're dealing with our finances, and like I said, if we had grants or revenue where it was just received all at once, you know, like a direct allocation from the get-go, then, you know, these kind of occurrences wouldn't happen. But that's the reality of it, is we have some programs that are reimbursable, so. Anybody else have questions? Councilwoman Butler?
I don't have questions about, because I think those questions that you answered, and thank you for answering them, they were my questions that I had on your actual quarterly report that was submitted for the division, so thank you for those. It's on, I got it up. So I just want to say thank you for that. I do have a question about this report, though, which is the budget report, because there were some, and I forgot my little stickies, I had about five or six, but I'll ask just the one that I remembered. There are a couple of budgets that are in there that have, and I don't know if this is because it's a fiscal year, because, and I understand, you know, that certain programs and departments have fiscal years, but the budget says that it's zero, then they have revenues and expenses, and it shows what that is, and then it shows the balance. Is that because of a fiscal year, and that's why it's reported that way in the budget Because I think, the one that I'm looking at, I think there were two of them, two or three that were like that. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Well, because, well, the one that I'm looking at right now was the BIA Law Enforcement, and then the other one was Transportation.
No.
Well, actually, Transportation wasn't, actually, they had an amount in there, but it's like their expenditures and stuff exceeded the amount, so my question on that one was, is there supposed to be a budget mod that's supposed to be done to reflect what they really have in their budget?
I'm pretty sure there's, they always have, I can't think what a word to call it, but they have like a base amount, then when they get their new funds in, they do a budget mod to include it in it.
Okay, and do they run on a fiscal year? I'm just asking.
Yeah, they run on, yeah, they, they run on the calendar year, January to December.
Okay, so does that budget, so it just brings up?
The tribal side, I'm sorry, the tribal side, there's a tribal side and a federal side. Yeah, the federal side does do the fiscal, though.
Okay. But the other one was for the law enforcement, because it, like I said, in the budget, it says it has a bunch of zeros, so just wondered, you know, because we've already approved all of the federal budgets, would this be included as a federal budget, and then they just need to enter in the budget? Is that why we're looking at it as zeros?
Law enforcement's whole.
Are you missing maybe the amendment that showed the amount of funds?
Yeah.
That law enforcement has received? Okay, if you can make a note of that.
Okay.
And send Treasurer Chapman and CC me an email on that, and I'll see if I can get that, because that would have came in a funding agreement, and that amount.
Yeah, those come, yeah, those come separate, like indirect cost and.
Yeah, because you won't.
CSC, yeah.
You will no longer be receiving contracts, it's just the amounts that are awarded in the annual funding agreement, so we can get that to you.
And then the other question I had was on the burial budget. There was a donation out of the burial budget for $500, and was just curious to wonder what that was, and was it associated with burial?
Sounds like Miss Cody.
That's exactly what I was going to say, Miss Cody, yeah.
So that will need to be fixed as well, because it's coming out of that, out of that budget.
Yes, yes.
I had a couple more, but I don't remember what they are. Offhand, those are the ones that I had, so thank you for your answers.
Sure.
Send us your sticky notes. Okay, any other?
That's what I got.
Any other comments? Do you have any questions for us, James, or for Treasurer Chapman?
President Nuttall, I would just like to say thank you to the, to James and his staff, because they have been so short-staffed this year, and glad that we have a director on now, but I want to thank them too for all their hard work.
Yes. Okay, if no more questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the third quarter, third quarterly report financials with changes.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Butler, is our second?
I'll second. Sammy Kimball?
Second by Councilwoman Kimball. Let's call for the vote.
George Gardapi, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
I'll help.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Item number eight, under New Business, item one, Presentation by the University of Oklahoma on the Aggravoltaic Solar Panel Design for Pawnee Nation College.
Oh, perfect. Hi, everyone. We're going to turn it over first to one of our colleagues online to give you an introduction.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. Thank you all very much for putting us on your agenda this evening, for taking the time to listen to some of the details of our project. This is a project in which we are co-designing aggravoltaic systems with Pawnee Nation College and with community researchers at Pawnee Nation College. If you can, this, well, if you can go to the second slide, I think we might all be looking at different versions of the presentation, but you can see our team is composed of researchers from the University of Oklahoma, from Portland State University, and from the University of Utah. And it's a team that represents a number of different academic disciplines. I'm in the Department of Geography at OU. We also have, we're working with biologists, mechanical engineers, and Scholar of Native American Studies, and we have a wonderful Community Advisory Board in Pawnee that has helped us kind of shape and implement the research. I think maybe Sunny and Felipe are there with you tonight, so they'll be available to answer some questions as well. We have five community researchers who you can see here, and Jessica Leading Fox will be presenting with one of the graduate students at OU, Abby Sarenka. And of, yeah, aside from the professors, there's also nine graduate students who are deeply involved in the project. If you can go to the third slide now that says aggravoltaics, that's kind of a new word, and it's unfamiliar to most people. The aggro refers to agriculture, growing plant systems. The photovoltaic cells refer to the kinds of panels that you've probably seen on rooftops or in fields. And the idea of combining them comes from the concern that while we, you know, need to generate more energy from renewable energies like solar, that takes up a lot of space, that then takes, can take away from other rural, important rural land uses like agriculture, and also other kinds of plant systems that are related to environmental restoration. If you can look quickly at the project overview slide, the next slide, where at the bottom it specifies the goal to design a demonstrative system that combines agriculture and energy production in a dynamic way, that is what we're doing with Pawnee Nation College. And you don't have to, this kind of graph has a lot of text on it, don't worry so much about that. But if you look at the, the kind of five, four steps over here, that gives you a sense of the project timeline. We've just started year two, we've been working for a year to just design the system to see what kinds of plant systems people in Pawnee are interested, what kind of plants, agricultural or other culturally significant plants, people are interested in growing and in learning and about and experimenting with, in conjunction with these, with solar panel systems. So it's been a lot of mutual learning across disciplines and across communities. And since I'm not there in person, I just wanted to kind of give just that very quick introduction. And we have Abby and Jessica that will continue from here.
Thanks, Diana. My name's Abby Sarenka, I'm one of the graduate, excuse me, one of the graduate students working on the project down at OU, and I'm going to tell you a little bit more about aggravoltaics and a little bit of context here in Oklahoma. So a typical solar installation looks kind of like what we see on the left side of the screen. That takes up a lot of space, and it's really only used for one purpose, which is energy production. And aggravoltaics is different from this, and that's what you see on the right side of the screen, because it's based on this principle of shared land use. So you have an agricultural product, and you have an energy product. And the key part of this is that if you do it right, there's actually a really beneficial interaction between the panel, the panel system above the agriculture and the agricultural product. And so the panels can provide shade to the crop or whatever you're planting underneath, and in turn, the crop or the plants that you have underneath are releasing moisture that gets trapped by the panel. And this has the effect of regulating the temperature, both of the panel and of the crops, and we know in the 110-plus degree summers that we can have around here, not overheating is really important. And so just for a little bit of context, aggravoltaics have really become popularized in the last five years or so. There's a lot of research in Europe, but this gives you an idea, this map here is from the National Renewable Energy Laboratory, and this is all of the active projects here in the US. I've zoomed in on Oklahoma so that you can see there are currently no registered projects in Oklahoma. And if you can move along to the next slide, please? Thank you. And so that brings me to the first point, what makes this project kind of unique, is that it would be one of its, the first of its kind in Oklahoma, which can position Pawnee Nation and Pawnee Nation College as regional leaders in this technology. It also stands to be said that while a lot of tribes are going after renewable energy projects, including solar, there's not a lot of action on aggravoltaics. So that's pretty unique. The second, oh, it's okay, thank you. The second thing that makes this project kind of unique is that as we're in a solar energy boom, we're in a renewable energy boom, and as renewable energy developers are looking for places to put new projects, they're increasingly looking to farmlands and to reservation land to get leases. This project kind of takes that dynamic and turns it on its head, because it's community-based, and the design is totally dependent on this collaboration with community researchers here at Pawnee Nation to determine a design that suits local needs and local benefits, rather than being driven by maximizing someone else's profits. And the last point that makes this a really unique project is that it's meant to be demonstrative. This is never going to be a huge installation, it's going to be quite small there at the college, but that's not the purpose. The purpose is not to generate a huge amount of energy, it's to provide sort of a living laboratory, if you will, where community researchers and where students at the college can test and experiment and innovate and determine just what kind of combinations of crops and panels works best here in the context of Pawnee Nation regionally as well. And Jessica Leading Fox is going to tell you a little bit more about the specifics. Noah? The external researchers, Community Advisory Board, and my fellow community researchers, we discussed plants for this project. We came up with five plant lists that have been compiled partially from the Cultural Resource Division's Ethnobotany List and the Agricultural Management Outreach Coordinator, Sunny. The general plant list, can you go next? The general plant list, the picture to the right is the Indian turnip or Pachuka. There are 11 plants on this list, including hog peanut, sage, common milkweed, and wild bergamot, or Indian perfume. Can you go next? We have our berry plants. Picture to the right is a ground plum. There are 15 plants listed in this, including two types of choke cherry, june berry, sun plam, persimmon, and smooth sumac. On our edible roots list, there are six plants listed in this. To the right is the morning glory, the bush morning glory, excuse me. The edible roots listed are mostly root tubers, and when prepared as food are roasted or boiled. Go next. We have our medicinal plant list. There's five plants. The photo on the right, the common name is bundle flower, which treats, which treats itchy skin, and boys use these dried seeds to create little rattles. A few plants listed in this include meadow rue, used as a horse medicine, which was rubbed on their muzzle as a stimulant, four o'clock, American licorice, large-flowered beard tongue. These plants all treat a number of ailments like fever and chills, toothache, earache, soothe sore mouths for babies, and helps with childbirth difficulty. Can you go next?
Can you go next? Mistleainius. This list consists of various plants which were used as dyes, construction, and shade. Some roots used as soap and teepee lacing pins. The photo on the right is yucca, which is, which was used as a needle and thread. Can you go next? During our, we had a convergence research workshop back in February. The initial workshop, the external researchers, we all met face-to-face with the community advisory board, our community researchers, to introduce what the agrivoltaics is. We had external researchers and community advisory board presented, which included an introduction to building resilient ecological systems, and introduction to work of Pawnee Seed Society, and introduction to agricultural and conservation teaching and research at Pawnee Nation College, and finally, an introduction to solar energy calculation and configuration possibilities to maximize synergies with plant systems. Can you go next? These are just photos from our February workshop. The photo on the left is, we were looking at potential sites. And then the photo on the right is when we were all meeting. Can you go next? The photo on the left is a 3D print of our structure. We were just playing around, it's nothing like in concrete right now. And then we had Laura is debriefing on the right. Can you go next?
Okay, and thanks, Jessica, for that. And so through these workshops that Jessica mentioned, we have been trying to get closer and closer to a design that we've all worked on together. And this is the current iteration of our design. You see in the slide, this is one row of solar panels. I believe that's 10 panels on that row. And if you imagine a whole installation, we're talking about 10 rows like this, that are about 10 feet in height, and the total area is like almost 100 feet by 115 feet. And the site that was chosen is there at the college, on that field, sort of between the creek and the road and the existing gardens at the college. The little red line that I drew is not the actual area, it's actually much smaller than that. We're just still talking about within that little rectangle I drew where it actually should go. But this design is meant to be scalable and adjustable. The panels can, the angle can be changed manually over time if, if people decide they want to try something different. And this installation can be made bigger or smaller by adding a row here or there, kind of as you choose. So it's meant to be help with experimentation. Can you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. And this is just to give you a bird's eye view of what it would look like. This is a simulation that one of the engineers was working on, but if you just focus on the shaded regions, these are each the rows of the panels, to give you an idea of what it would look like, again, from that bird's eye view. So thank you so much for paying attention and listening to us and letting us share what we've been working on, and we'll be happy to take any questions that you have and answer them to the best of our ability.
Thank you for your presentation. Council, do we have any questions?
I would like to just say, great job. And I think in a time where research and education in general are under attack, it's good to see students being a part of meaningful research. You know, I, I think there are really cool things that can come from this, and I just want to know, appreciate you and great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is Dr. Evans. He also sits on the college's Board of Trustees, so.
Nice to meet you.
I just have a comment, and this is great research. It's really exciting to see what you guys are doing with this, and that's, it's interesting to see all of the plants and what they do and the medicinal, you know, and things like that. The only comment that I have is that, you know, we're doing a lot of solar projects here around the nation, ourselves with geothermal, with the solar, with the solar panels as well, and, you know, how does this tie into our infrastructure plan and, you know, because it is the college, which is part of the, you know, our entity, one of the entities of the Pawnee Nation. So I'd just be curious to know if you guys have got with our planning department to see how you tie in, and then our property department to see, you know, because I know that their allocation for land that they're suggesting is on, still in the table items, it's never been brought back to council, so. I know it's just the presentation, but I'm just making sure that you guys are going through the right avenues of our processes and procedures that, you know, please talk with planning, please talk with property, so that you guys, you know, this, like I said, I love the project, it's really, it's really neat.
Felipe? Yeah. Let's hear your update, and then we'll go to questions.
Absolutely. Those are great questions, and absolutely, we're cognizant of that. So we have reached out to Chris McCray, who could speak to.
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm Sunny Evans. I'm the Agricultural Land Management and Outreach Coordinator under the Division of Ag here at the Pawnee Nation. And I have been helping as an advisor, on the advisory group for this project. And those are really important, they've been important to us the whole time, because we truly value and recognize tribal sovereignty. So this land, even the land that's under Pawnee Nation College, is Pawnee Nation land, and you are the sovereign authority over it. We have, and we actually have kind of a timeline set out that we can share with you, we'd be happy to, of the ways that we've tried to kind of make sure that we're following in alignment. We have reached out to the planning, Director of Planning, Chris McCray. And so he sat in on a meeting with us to know what's going on, and also has shared with us about these projects that are upcoming and ways that maybe we could do, look at integrating together in the future as those come into fruition. We, I know that Dr. Felipe Chavez Ramirez of Pawnee Nation College has come to question, because we, there were some questions about what lands the college had been already allocated for being able to use. And I understand that there's still some question there, and I'm not sure, I think Dr. Chavez Ramirez could probably speak to that. But we also spoke to the TIPA officer for this land that we talked to, we were looking at, just to make sure that there wasn't anything culturally sensitive. He said that was okay. And we're here really to ask you to, because you're sovereign over this, you know, for your acceptance to move forward.
Yeah, because we just have a presentation on here, it didn't, it didn't call for any action, so we'll, go ahead and, like I said, do the presentations, and then we'll reserve our questions for when you get completed.
Good afternoon. Felipe Chavez Ramirez from Pawnee Nation. I was just going to update, when we talk about the land, try to better define the boundaries, and we're supposed to go through the, the property committee, so they can make sure that the boundaries are indeed not potentially conflicting with other potential locations. So we are in that process. The last meeting was not, and there was no quorum, so there was no process, so we're waiting for the next property meeting, so we can, they can review the map and the suggested area at this point.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman here, I do recognize that you joined the meeting at, I believe it was, by the time noted.
I think it was six, I mean, five thirty-nine, it looked like.
I have it at five forty-four PM, so if you can just get that reflected in the minutes. But if you can put that on your committee agenda for that to be addressed for further discussion.
Okay, we've had, we've had our, our agenda, and we're having a difficult time with our meetings. We may need to schedule a special meeting, and I'd like to visit with Sammy. I co-chair about it after this meeting and see if, we have our next one scheduled for December 18th, because we didn't, not going to have one tomorrow, didn't get it set up in time. And so we may need to, if you need action before then, we could call an emergency meeting. So I apologize, I know Felipe has been trying to go over this, and it does look like the area, it looks like it was in the area that was allocated to them, but we can double-check on that.
Okay, and just also to note too, because you did bring up an interesting point, you know, about maybe existing leases, and that's something that we can look at also, if there is an overlap on land that's already been allocated, if that's something, maybe we can even work into future leases that are approved by the BIA to see, you know, what can be done there. So I have a couple of questions. What are the tangible products that are going to be developed after the project is completed? Like what's, what's going to come out of this, a report, you know, are we going to grow some plants and berries, what kind of crops, you know, but what are the tangible projects, I mean, products?
Yeah, that's a great question. Like we mentioned, the, the size of this installation is not huge, so we're not going to be feeding a whole bunch of people or producing a huge amount of energy. The idea is really just to, with the other projects in mind at the nation, the other solar projects, be able to do research that is helpful and informative, if anything like this might be applicable in other areas, going after this, again, like shared use model instead of just, just plain solar arrays. Yeah, and of course, like from the academic side, there is the opportunity for Pawnee Nation College to, to use this technology and, and do research. There's an opportunity for the researchers coming from other universities to do quite a bit of research, and the possibility of academic publications and these sorts of things, both for the people external to Pawnee as well as the people here in Pawnee.
Okay. But can I add one thing to that? The, the system itself will kind of function like a living laboratory that people can visit and meet with the community researchers, and they can kind of discuss what kinds of findings that they're seeing. And you asked about the plants that will be part of the experiments, and it, that's kind of on our agenda for the next couple of weeks. The, the community advisory board and community researchers are meeting in the next week or so to determine which of those many plants that Jessica discussed are kind of the priority plants that they're, that they're interested in learning the most about and learning, learning about how they might fare in these kinds of systems. So, so those are a couple of different kinds of, of possible sort of research outputs, you could call them. There's also one, one other thing that I could mention about this project, is that there's a parallel project in Mexico with a sapotec community in, in the mountains of Mexico, which, you know, has, it's very different ecologically from, from Pawnee Nation, but has a lot of overlap in the kinds of crops that are, that are of interest, especially kind of the Three Sisters triad. And so there will be sort of comparative information that is generated, like what kinds of plants do well in different kinds of ecologies. And there will be exchange, we hope, starting next year, between the two communities, an opportunity for community researchers to travel to Oaxaca, Mexico, and an opportunity for community researchers from Mexico to travel to Pawnee and learn what's happening there. So those, those are a couple of different things that we're thinking about.
Just one more comment, because when the presentation was made to the Utilities Committee, Jennifer was there, and she asked us to prepare a data sharing agreement, so that all the information can be utilized, passed on to, and I've been, I've got some examples, some data sharing agreements from, from Brian, so we can prepare, so the idea is that all information that is gathered here can be hopefully usable, applicable, but at least shared with everybody.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Felipe. That was my question, that was going to be my next question, is have we thought about data sharing agreement with the nation and the college? The other thing is that, you know, there's a potential tonight for us to approve the solar permitting, so just keep that on your radar, that that may get approved tonight, and then you'll still have to follow that law. So that's going to be a new law that's going to be implemented in place, so just make sure that you read that document and that we're in compliance with the Pawnee Nation's laws. Just wanted to make those two comments, thank you.
I do appreciate your presentation, because like I said, you know, a couple of questions were answered, and then without us, you know, having any kind of project summary or anything like that, you know, there's a lot of questions that come to mind. So I do appreciate hearing about, you know, how all this will work with the shade, the moisture, the temperature control for the panels. And that's why I said, you know, even incorporating it, if we don't have lands that are set aside specifically just for this project, to look at potential leases that we currently have with, not with the BIA, but with other leases, you know, that could be something that's, like I said, put into play for the future. So that has a question about the lands, the land allocation is addressed, that was my other question about the plants. What type of plants are we going to grow, you know, what type of selection, you know, that, that whole process, the actual uses of it, once they do get, or once, you know, the crop does come in, what are the uses that are going to happen? And then, you know, some of your community partners too, what, what does seed preservation, are they just advisory only, or, you know, is that any kind of MOU with like the, the growing of the crops, or what, what role do they play, I guess, in this, just to have an understanding of the whole project?
Well, the original contact came through the Pawnee Seed Preservation folks, and the idea was to use some of the seeds, you know, because what was presented was some of the culturally important crops, but there's also the actual food crops that we're also going to have, some of the vegetables. And so we were thinking of doing some of the Three Sisters, for example, that Diana was talking about, because we've been doing that at the college garden, and it, the need for more seed is kind of one of those efforts, and we know that it's hard to grow corn here, so we're trying to see if there's ways we can help. So it was primarily for those crops, the Three Sisters, and I know they have other collection of seeds, and I'm not sure, because the last time we tried to invite, they didn't show up, so we're not sure what's going on.
Yeah.
We didn't invite them.
No, not for here.
Oh, I don't know if he's, we're not sure what's, you know, there's a time of flux right now with Pawnee Seed Preservation Society, and so the most important thing is formally, the agreements are with Pawnee Nation College. So at this point, Pawnee Seed Preservation is only there as an advisor, in an advisory capacity.
Capacity.
That said, I have, have, because we had had this discussion with the prior director of the Pawnee Seed Preservation Society about the use of these seeds, we had kind of an oral verbal agreement, but because things have changed, I have, Felipe and I have requested their board to reconsider, and their current board to reconsider and see what they thought would be the best use, and if that, if they would be okay with going forward with partnership. So we're still waiting for them to kind of get back to us about that. But in that case, because they are, you know, we're not formally the main partners, Pawnee Nation Colleges, is the question is, would you still want us to have an MOU in these, in these situations, or is that up to Pawnee Nation College to kind of decide?
Can you just let us know when your advisory committee meeting is next week? And then, well, maybe we can get some representation on there and try to, you know, get some, a little bit of issues or topics, maybe that. maybe that need to be addressed, and then we can move from there.
Sure, we're actually meeting tomorrow at 1:00 PM over at Pawnee Nation College in Alvin Leaning Fox. But we can, of course, make another, if that's too soon, we can make another time. Whenever is convenient for you.
Okay, we'll see if we can get somebody over there.
All right, thank you.
Let me see, food to crops. Because that was my question about, you know, the, the plants and the crops, then becomes, you know, well, who, who becomes the owner of the crops? So is that Pawnee Nation College, or is that a combination of everybody?
What if you turn all the seeds back?
Okay. And then, one more question is on your partners. Okay, who is U of U, what is that?
U of U is University of Utah.
Okay, and then the other one was PSU.
Portland State University.
Portland State. Okay, Councilwoman Butler.
And those universities also have students working on the project as well.
Okay.
So I have two additional questions. I always say, this is my last question. First one, you know, you mentioned the seeds that you guys give them all back, but would it be not beneficial for you to put in your MOU with them, that you make your own seed bank for, because you said this is for also future research? So why wouldn't you want to put that in your MOU to work with them to say, hey, we want to build our, our seed bank so that we can do future, future planning for this, or future research? Just a suggestion. And then, the other thing is, when is your start date? And when is, what, what is your timeline? What are you guys projecting for when you want to start and when, you know, what is your timeline?
Yeah, so the, the hope is that a system would be constructed and ready, I think we're shooting for January at this point, with the idea that we can utilize the growing season this coming spring.
Anybody online have any questions? Councilwoman Kimball, Councilwoman Hare, Treasurer Chapman?
No, thank you.
This is Sammy Kimball, thank you, President Nudle. I would just like to have them meet offline and bring it back and let us know what their plan is. It seems that we, you know, need to discuss this further and, and have more time to consider what they're trying to do. Thank you.
And like I said, we'll try to have some representation on the advisory board so we can, you know, or your advisory group, so we can kind of move things along. And we look forward to collaborating. I think it's a great project, you know, ecosystem friendly, utilizing the resources that we have. You know, it doesn't look like it's, it takes too much. What, who's funding the cost of the solar panels? Where does that?
The National Science Foundation.
Okay, yeah, I did see that on there. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot for meeting with us.
Thank you. Item number two, Budget Committee Recommendations, Treasurer Chapman?
Yes, the first one, A, this was all discussed in Budget Committee brought forward, is approval of 2148 Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program Infrastructure Budget. And this, the funding agency is the Department of Health and Human Services Administration for Children and Families, and this was brought to us by Lisa Gudey. And the purpose of it is to award these additional funds into the budget. It was $895, the additional amount that was added. And she stated that we do not apply for these funds, that they are provided to the program along with li-heat funding. And this amount of 895 will be used for assistance. And all the paperwork reflects that there. So, if anybody doesn't have any questions, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So this is, so where's, where are these funds being added to, the li-heat program?
That's what, yes.
So should, should this not be a modification then?
I don't know, I, it, it's just adding extra money that they didn't think they were going to get.
Because their, their li-heat, the li-heat budget has already been approved, so this should just be a modification.
Okay.
Okay, so I got a motion to approve the budget mod by Treasurer Chapman, seconded by Councilwoman Butler. Does anybody have any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve. Well, I'm sorry, let's call for the vote, I'm sorry.
George Garder, P.S., Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item B, Approval of 4152 Native Connections Budget Modification Number One.
Yes, this one right here was submitted by Mike Ortiz, and it is funded by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, SAMSA. And the purpose of this one is to approve the budget modification for an increased supplement of 75,000, $75,745. And it, it is just an increase, is what it is. And the comments that he told us were all Native Connection programs were given the opportunity to request any carryover from year one to year four. And they were not approved for year one, but approved for years two and three, so they applied to see if they could receive any carryover funding. And this is the final year for this Native Connections. And all the paperwork is attached, he submitted all the paperwork. So, are there any questions? And if not, I'll make a.
This is, Miss, I have a question. So is this, was this a pool of money that was, that was left in their pot? Or is this us doing a carryover request to the funding agency?
It is, yes, it is a carryover. It is marked carryover.
And these have to be expended by when?
They're, well, this is the final year.
Well, it's the final year of the program, but for the carryover, oh, it says July 30th, 2025.
Yes.
Okay, and do we know why we submitted a carryover request?
I.
Or was there a delay in funding? Does anybody know?
Just looking, just looking at the narrative, President Nudle, it looks like, it looks like the funding agency had carryover and tried to ask to submit a request if they wanted more funding, and it looks to me like this is what we were given.
Okay, good, because I was thinking it was the reverse, and that, you know, doesn't have a good look for us, but that's why I was saying, is it tribes invited to submit for a piece of the pie, basically? Okay.
That's what their, it looks like to me.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
Thank you.
And a motion to approve Budget Modification Number One, 4152 Native Connections Budget.
And I'll second, thank you.
Treasurer Chapman, did you make the motion?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and a second by Councilwoman Kimball. If no further questions, we'll call for the vote.
George Garder, P.S., Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number C, Approval of 4154 Tribal Opioid Response Budget.
Yes, this was also SAMSA funding and presented to the committee by Mike Ortiz. And the program is the Tribal Opioid Response Program, and this is to approve the budget for a newly funded program. Pawnee Nation was awarded $250,000 a year for five years. So, that's, that's what it is, it's just creating the budget for it.
Can I get a motion to approve the Tribal Opioid Response Budget?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Treasurer Chapman, seconded by Secretary Garder-Pee. If no further questions, we'll call for the vote.
George Garder, P. Yes, Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number three, Approval of Resolution 2468 Articles of Operation for the Pawnee Nation Steel Company LLC will be presenting.
Hello, Counsel. So what you have in front of you is just going through the process. I know in our last meeting, you know, we were able to create the resolution to get the Pawnee Nation Steel Company LLC established. So, our next steps was creating two documents, which was Articles of Operation and the Articles of Op-, what is it? Operations and the.
Articles of.
Articles of Organization, yeah, I know, they're, so appreciate that. So, so what we have here is, we went through governing docs, worked along with AG Vance with this, and went through the vetting process. I know Denise Miller had some great questions regarding some of that, so we were able to provide clarity on that. We do have some red lines, just to fine tune everything and making sure some of those corrections were added. So we just wanted to note that, that we put those in consideration, highlighted those changes. Happy to answer any questions, if y'all have any, any, but this is just kind of going through the similar processes what we've done in the past with the Mental Health LLC and some other LLCs that we, that the nation has done in the past.
Does Counsel have any questions? Councilwoman Butler?
I, I have a question. On page two of the, of this document, there was a question, and it's highlighted, but it's, it was never answered, and it's under Article Two, Purpose of Business of Organization, and it's in the second to the last sentence where it says, "as set forth in the Articles of Organization", and is it supposed to be these Articles of Operation? Or was the, is that just a misspelling on that? Have you looked at that?
Oh, set forth in, yeah, I believe that is correct.
If we could, if we could just fix that whenever, if this gets approved.
Yeah.
There are some other little things that the committee had seen and questions that they had had in governing docs, and so, a lot of those questions were answered, but there were a couple of things that, that right there, I just didn't see that, so, but thank you.
Yeah, so we left those in there, just to note that we would make those corrections.
Okay. Councilwoman Kimball, I see your hand raised.
Yes, I was just going to ask that, that, and Articles of Organization be, be removed, and it looks like Jamie just did that, so I'll put my hand down, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm assuming we'll just separate these, and I think it'll be similar language, but we'll just separate the two articles into two separate resolutions, and I'll bring that other one to next Counsel, is that correct? Just to make sure I understand it correctly.
So, whatever, but what we have here is the Articles of Operation for the Pawnee Nation Steel. We've addressed the corrections needing to be made on the Articles of Operation. Now, are there any other comments needing to be, needed to be addressed? Or are we okay with this document, as is with the changes? Because then that poses to my next question, and the actual resolution will need to be amended to reflect that. So if we're good with the changes that are noted on the organization, now let's look at the resolution. On the fourth, whereas, it's stating by Resolution 2467, the Pawnee Nation of Oklahoma supported the development, it should say, of the LLC with the name of the company. I don't know if you want to say "as" the Pawnee Nation Steel Company, or with the name of the company being Pawnee Nation Steel, as the, or as being. Okay, and then the fifth, whereas, an organization strike should be, and it should say, is hereby formed for the purpose of carrying out. And then the sixth, whereas, after Articles of Operation strike and Articles of Organization, because it'll, that become, that'll become its own resolution. It'll be separated from the Articles of Operation. And I have these noted too, Jamie. Um, was it, further be resolved, you'll need to strike and Articles of Organization there as well. Any other changes?
President Nudle, I got the end up.
Yes, Councilwoman Kimball.
Thank you, can we roll up to the, to the last whereas, please, and just let me reread it? Thank you. So, to the Pawnee Nation, PBC Resolution Incorporated, herewith, herewith should be one word, the Articles of Operation for Pawnee Nation Steel Company. Okay, thank you. Does that make sense to everybody like that?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If no further discussion or changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve or disapprove Resolution 2468 Articles of Operation with changes for the Pawnee Nation Steel Company LLC.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Butler, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dr. Evans. Call for the vote.
George Garder, P. Yes, Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Dean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Item number four, Approval of Resolution 2469 Inner Tribal Agricultural Council Membership End dues.
Thank you, counsel, I'll be presenting this one as well. Again, Sunny Evans from the Division of Agriculture, and this is simply an ask to, permission to join the Intertribal Agriculture Council as a member tribe. Uh, it's $200 a year, and it has various benefits, including one free seven, one free registration to their annual membership, which is $750 otherwise, for one of the delegates. And where specifically, they request a resolution to, and a letter to designate who will be the delegates, and who the alternate delegates are. I believe this one is following the same template as the Intertribal Buffalo Council. Right now, Jimmy Justice is who I suggested as a delegate, I suggested myself as an alternate, but I, does not have to stay that way. I will be traveling there this year, but I have a scholarship to go, so I'm not having to pay anything myself.
And that was going to be my question, is whether or not he was attending? Because why is he the primary if he's not going to be attending the meetings?
He'd really like to, but he, it's the same week as the Intertribal Buffalo Council, also in Las Vegas. And so they all have them at the same time, and so he will be stepping over, I think, to see things here. He'd really like to, especially as we're moving into this, um, production of produce that we'd like to direct sell. And Intertribal Buffalo, Intertribal Agriculture Council has a lot of technical support for marketing, um, food safety, all these areas that are really useful in this tribal food sphere.
Secretary Gardapi?
And this is something that we're going to be looking to do yearly, correct? So on the last "whereas," can we put "and" to pay the membership dues on a yearly basis or something? So it's not just a one-time resolution?
I think you'll have to have a revision every time.
Every time.
Every time.
Especially with the NCAA membership, because, you know, delegation may change.
Sure, and I also wanted to say, I hadn't mentioned, but we had already anticipated the chance to join this, so that, that membership cost was already put into our budget for this year, for the Division of Agriculture.
That was my question. Revision? On the fourth "whereas," it says, "The Pawnee Business Council finds it to be in the best interest," if it could be, "The Pawnee Business Council finds it in the best interest to the agricultural development of the Pawnee Nation's reserve, that the Pawnee Nation become a member of the Intertribal Council." Does that sound more appropriate, the apostrophe "s"? Did you get the first part? After Pawnee Business Council finds it to be in the best interest, that's how it reads in the packet. So if it could just say, "The Pawnee Business Council finds it to be in the best interest."
Take out the-
And not "interests," it's "interest." And then adding apostrophe "s" on Pawnee Nation's reserve.
Okay, and then go to "be it further resolved," delete "that," and Pawnee Business Council hereby designates. Any other revisions? If not, I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2469.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Counselwoman Butler, second by Counselwoman Kimball, let's call for the vote.
George Gardapi, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Thank you, Sunny.
Thank you, counsel.
Thanks, Sunny.
Item number five, approval of Resolution 2470, 2025 Pawnee Nation Long Range Transportation Plan.
Good evening, counsel, I'm Rhonda James with the Department of Transportation. I don't know if all of you had a chance to read the little synopsis of what the long-range transportation plan is, and if you have any questions, or if you'd like for me to give a brief description. Yeah, if you can give us a synopsis or a summary, please. Basically, it is just to show the federal government, which we have a direct agreement with, that we are committed to provide a sustainable, safe, and efficient transportation network for all modes of transportation within our servicing boundary. It's the backbone of the tip, I'm sorry, I thought I was loud. It is the backbone to the tip, which will be brought to you next, which is the fiscally constrained part of it. It, along with giving the history and kind of our strategic planning of how we're going to make these projects happen with funding sources and things like that, there was also a priority list. The priority list is still open to be changed, and before this is submitted to federal highways, you guys, if you have any comments, we will add it to it.
What, can you kind of outline what some of the priorities are, what are the priorities for the plan?
Um, it's not so much the land, it's the infrastructure assets of like roadway, sidewalks, parking lots, um-
Do you have priority categories, or how, how do you, which ones get priority?
Well, basically off the funding source that we're pretty sure that we're going to be able to secure. If it is not on our priority list, we are not allowed to expend funds on it, and it can't go on our tribal improvement plan, which then the federal government won't allow us to spend any money on those assets that we have. If you will see on the priority list in FY25, a lot of it has to do with bridges, there are 39 of them on there. That is due to the bill funding. If we are going to have access to the bridge funds, this is the time to get them.
Does any counsel have any questions? I know that this information was received today, so I don't know if you've had time to review, but it looks pretty standard, and then these, can this be amended, or?
It is, it is a living document, every time that we amend it, it is by resolution, and then federal highway will submit it.
Hearing no further questions, I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2470, 2025 Pawnee Nation Long Range Transportation Plan.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Uh, Counselwoman Hare, did you have a question?
I just had a correction on it, and I think it was a stealth check. I think it, it says evaluation of trial-owned bridges, and I think it should be tribal. Uh, first page of the priority list, uh, right, right above FY 2025.
And the priorities, or which document are you looking at?
I'm looking at Pawnee Nation 20-year priority list, I think it's the first page, yeah, it's right after the resolution.
FY even years, it says on the left.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Evaluation of tribal-owned bridges, it says trial.
Oh, thank you.
Probably a stealth check, changing it.
Thanks for that, Counselwoman Hare, I got a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Secretary Gardapi. If no further comments, we'll call for the vote.
George Gardapi, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
All right, thank you for that one. Item number six, approval of Resolution 2471, 2025 Pawnee Nation Tribal Transportation Improvement Plan.
So the tribal transportation improvement plan is where you take your items or your projects that you've planned out on your long-range plan, and you fiscally constrain them. And then that gets turned into federal land highways if the business council concurs, and they will show that as the priority list where we can go after the funding. It, um, let's see. Basically, the big part is it's fiscally constrained. Long term is 20 years, and short term is five years. In federal land highways eyes.
Any questions for Rhonda on the transportation improvement plan? If not, entertain a motion to approve?
I, I just have one thing, I'm looking at the resolution.
Counselwoman Butler?
On the last "whereas," um, it should be period after Pawnee Nation of Oklahoma has apostrophe "and."
Anything else?
No, nothing else, I'll make a motion to approve with changes.
I'll second.
Got a motion to approve with changes by Counselwoman Butler, second by Dr. Evans. Let's call for the vote.
George Gardapi, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Okay, item number seven, approval of Resolution 2472, Title VIII Energy Resource Protection Act, Chapter 12 Solar Energy Permit Edition. Who will be presenting?
I think-
I just want to say thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Rhonda.
I, I think Kel, is Kelton or Monty on? I think Kelton was the, was on the list.
Yeah, this is Kelton, I'm on here.
Whichever one of you guys want to present this.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. This is just an addition to our Title 13 Pawnee Nation Energy Resource Protection Act. We've added, uh, language for our Chapter 12, a solar energy permitting process. It kind of coincides with all of our other permits, which in Title 13 is mainly oil and gas. But we left it open when we developed that, and counsel passed it, um, years ago to add in wind and solar as, as we get to those points. And so now we're to the point of the solar with a lot of different solar activities going on. The purpose of this is to provide for a permitting process that someone wants to develop solar on the Pawnee Nation properties, trust land or, or owned by the tribe itself, that they ensure that they get a permit. Documents are provided as far as environmental processes, NEPA, cultural resources has all gone through. And then also would address to ensure that the proper leases are received through the Pawnee Nation Real Property Act, the wind, wind and solar resource lease is part of that, um, to ensure that we're following those laws. Then, of course, there's just basically housekeeping also, you know, when someone wants to come in and build it, build a system that they're, uh, you know, providing for the proper sanitation and safety of the construction process and addressing any easements and things like that that would need to be done. But, uh, that's about, that's about it in a nutshell.
Are there any questions for Mr. Kelton?
I don't have any questions, but I, I do want to let the counsel know that this did go through the governing documents committee, and we had AG Vance review as well. And so all of our questions were answered, and we were moving it forward to counsel.
Hearing no questions, I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2472, Title VIII Energy Resource Protection Act, Chapter 12 Solar Energy Permit.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion on the floor by Counsel, or Secretary Gardapi, second by Counselwoman Butler. Let's call for the vote.
George Gardapi, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimball?
Yes.
Right, thank you for that.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, item number nine, we have open forum, do we have anything for open forum? Any announcements? Counselwoman Hare?
Yeah, I missed the opportunity to commend the Transportation Department, Rhonda, on that comprehensive plan, there's a lot of, of, big transportation plan, there's a lot of good statistics in there, a lot of good information, thank you.
Counselwoman Butler?
I, I do have an announcement, not really an announcement, just we're going to invite the leadership and whoever at the Pawnee Nation wants to attend. We are having our Chamber Roundtable on Thursday at 11:30, and since it's Native American Heritage Month, we will be sharing, doing kind of a cultural exchange, we'll also have some other speakers attend the meeting as well. But the Cultural Resources, Resource Division will be hosting that event.
In the museum?
At the museum, yes.
And what time?
11:30.
Right, any other announcements?
So for tomorrow, Wednesday, November 20th, will be the showing of the English series. Um, I believe they'll be doing two episodes, and it'll be at 6 o'clock at the Pawnee Nation Museum. And then on Monday, November 25th, will be the CRD Hand Game at 5:30 at the Community Building. Um, and then on Tuesday, November 26th, will be the Ittita Tutta Kichasu Forum at 5:30 at the Community Building as well.
All right, thank you for those announcements. Um, item number 10, set the next meeting date, this will be December the 3rd. Treasurer Chapman, did you have your hand up?
No, I didn't. Is it up? I don't see it up.
Did, did we need to set a virtual meeting?
Oh, no.
Yes. Virtual.
For?
To pass the resolution, we're going to get ready at the budget Tuesday.
Can we, can you make that request in writing to Counsel, uh, Secretary Gardapi? Because we haven't had, we haven't addressed that yet, so I don't want to set a meeting if we're not prepared for it.
Okay, so-
Right now, December the 3rd, but if we have to set an emergency meeting, I mean, we have the option to do that.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Anything else? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion by Counselwoman Butler, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Secretary Gardapi, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstained? Okay, we are adjourned at 7:04 PM. Thank you, everyone, for attending this evening.